Barely have a quorum. Rod, do you want to go ahead and call your meeting to order?
At this time, I would call the special meeting of the Toledo City Council in conjunction with the County Commission and other entities in the county to order.
Thank you, and I realize I skipped over Yahut's calling their meeting to order. My apologies. So can Mayor Moore call your meeting to order?
I call the joint meeting of the Yahut City Council at all to order.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, back down to the coast to Newport. I see our city manager Spencer sitting here as well as our mayor. Do we have Councilmember Beatrice Boteo?
Here.
How about Deepmar Gobel?
Yes.
Okay, CM Hall?
Present.
Cynthia Jacoby?
Here.
And Ryan Parker?
Robert Gambino.
Okay, do we have Ryan? No, my understanding is David Allen is no longer on the council. So Mayor, would you like to call your meeting to order?
At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Newport City Council's special meeting of May 14.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Depot Bay, do we have our mayor on the phone? I think I heard him.
Yes, just got on, had the wrong number, too many emails. And I am here, would like to call, would like to call the special meeting of the City of Depot Bay to order.
Okay, do we have Councilmember Kathy Short? Okay, how about Lauren Goddard? I thought I heard Lauren.
You did.
Okay, thank you, Lauren. How about Debbie Calendar?
I'm here.
Thank you. How about Joyce King?
Yes, I'm here.
And I thought I heard Jerome Grant. Jerome, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, and how about Barbara? No Barbara, okay. Moving on to Lincoln City, do we have our city manager on the phone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Rod. How about Mayor Anderson?
No names are available.
Yes, you've got the mayor.
Okay, thank you. How about Mitch Parsons?
I'm here.
Diana Hinton?
Here.
Riley Hoagland?
Here.
Diane? Judy?
Here.
And how about Rick?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, would you like to call your meeting to order?
I would. Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of May 14 of the City of Lincoln City City Council. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And then as far as my colleagues, do I have Commissioner Hall on the phone?
Yes, you do.
Great, and how about Commissioner Hunt? I thought I heard you.
I am present, thank you. Welcome to everyone.
Thank you, and I had already called our meeting to order earlier. Okay, and now that I made all of you unmute your phones and stay here, if you could remute them, that would really help. Thank you. We're now going to move on to an update on COVID-19 response from Lincoln County Public Health and our incident commander, Rebecca Austin.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much. So I want to give you an update on our stats. We have 3,479 positive cases in the state of Oregon. There's 137 people who have died of COVID-19, and we have 83,272 tests that we've done throughout the state. In Lincoln County, we have now seven positives. We just got a new one today. We have no one that has died from COVID-19. We have five people that have recovered, and we have completed 971 tests in our county. So the things that we continue to work on are building surge capacity, so if we do get an outbreak, that we can protect our hospital and make sure that people have a place to go to isolate. We continue to work with our high-risk populations, reaching out to our Spanish-speaking and mom-speaking populations. We're working with our long-term care facilities where we will be doing some active surveillance, which means that we will be doing testing. We do case investigations and contact tracing, and we're going to start doing that in our long-term care facilities with staff. And then we're also doing active surveillance with all of our essential workplaces. And of course, we continue to monitor our personal protective equipment, or PPE, and those are all requirements that we have to meet in order to maintain in our Phase One open. So I just want to say that regardless of when we open up, we want the community to know what it will take to do this safely. So we are, today we have launched our Keep Lincoln County Open campaign, and it has three easy messages that will, we will all be required to abide by. So the first one is physical distancing.
James Took.
We need to stay six feet apart. The second one is to protect others, which means to wear a mask when you're out in public and stay home when you're sick. And the third one is to keep clean, which means we continue to need to wash our hands frequently and clean surfaces that are used often. So just so you all know, it's great that you're all on this call and that we have put together packets for our cities to hand out if they want, to use for themselves in their buildings. We have printed up in these packets, we have printed all the materials that people need to push out, help us push out this campaign and to meet some of the guidelines that have been set forth by the governor and OHA. So we have packets available, and then you can also go onto our webpage, if you're in a position where you can print out your own posters and flyers, you can go ahead and do that. It's under our reopening tab under the county website. So I just want to remind everybody, like I said earlier, it doesn't really matter what date we open on. If we don't all abide by these three fairly basic principles, we will not be successful. And it's going to take all of us to monitor this. You have a public health department of 26 people. There is no way that we can monitor this for the whole county. So it's going to take everybody to make sure that these rules are followed. And then I just want to remind everybody that there is an essential travel only in place regardless of our opening status, and that I would highly urge high-risk people to continue to stay home, especially those with chronic conditions or that are immune compromised. So remember that this is a new virus to us, and we continue to learn every day more about this virus. So we will need to maintain flexibility as we move forward here. And you know the law of nature is to adapt to survive. So that's my update for today, and thank you so much, everybody, for helping us do this safely.
Thank you, Rebecca, and I would just remind people that if you have
Will Warman.
specific questions or would like to reach out, to feel free to reach out to Public Health. We still have our call center going as well. Additionally, on the kind of update information around COVID-19, as many of you have already heard, Lincoln County did apply and receive back approval for reopening earlier today. I just wanted to read the letter that I got from the governor, basically giving us our approval. Chair Jacobson, thank you for the effort you, your hospitals and your public health experts, put into your plan for meeting the prerequisites, demonstrating your county's preparedness for beginning to lift restrictions during the COVID-19 pandemic. I am pleased to inform you that your county's application to enter Phase One on May 15 has been approved. My goals for a safe and strong Oregon: minimize hospitalizations and deaths, allow people to return to work so they can support themselves and their families, minimize risk to frontline workers, avoid overwhelming the healthcare system, protect those at highest risk of severe illnesses, especially the elderly, those with underlying health conditions, and communities of color, and support social, cultural, spiritual reopening for small groups that preserve community cohesion and cultural practices. I want to be clear that reopening does not come without risks. With every restriction lifted, we know transmission of the virus has the potential to increase. The contact tracing, testing, and personal protective equipment requirements that were part of the conditions for opening will be essential to mitigate that transmission and sprees. The Oregon Health Authority will be monitoring the spread of COVID-19 in your county and throughout the state, and will be ready to work with you if concerns arise. Thank you for all your hard work and vigilance on behalf of Oregonians. Sincerely, Governor Kate Brown. With that, my understanding is talking to Council Belmont, that the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners actually needs to ratify that opening. Is that correct?
That's correct. I think the way that you authorized the application, not knowing what date the governor would give approval or what date she would set for approval, once that was provided, we wanted to actually make a motion to ratify that May 15 date. So I've prepared actually a motion for the commissioners, if you're ready to adopt that now.
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to make the motion. This is Commissioner Hall. I move that Lincoln County enter Phase One of the governor's plan to reopen Oregon on May 15, 2020, based upon the approval of the county's application by the governor.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. Do I have a second from a county commissioner?
Yeah, I'll second it. I oppose the initial idea of opening, but at this point, the plan has been approved. The Board of Commissioners has made a decision, so I'll second the opening date to be tomorrow, Friday, the 15th.
Thank you, Commissioner Hunt. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, none opposed. All right, thank you. So now getting into the harder part for today. Basically, we have, well, actually, I'll let Wayne do that kind of introduction piece on what we're doing.
Sure. Commissioners, maybe I could, do you want me to talk a little bit about what Phase One means?
Oh, yes, I do. Sorry. Talk about what Phase One means and does not mean, yes.
I think there's a lot of misunderstanding and misinformation out there about what that actually entails or doesn't entail in a Phase One opening. So of course, we did meet the criteria, was granted, and you've now set tomorrow as the date that we enter Phase One in Lincoln County. What that, the governor's going to do, and there is still guidance, I want to make sure it's clear, not all the guidance that we need to operate as a county or across the state is actually out there yet. There's still some more stuff that's going to come forward. I understand some of them might come out later today, some of them might come out tomorrow, some might come out early next week. We're not really sure. So I'm going to just talk about some of the things that were changed on a statewide basis, and then locally, what changed for us. So on a statewide basis, there were changes in childcare, I think extremely important. I know that's been an issue in a number of communities and counties across the state. And that's going to be, there's going to be increased availability of childcare under some very strict regulations and guidelines that are set forth in guidance that actually is available now. There will be the opportunity to open summer schools, summer camps, and other youth programs with physical distancing. Again, there's a set of criteria. I have not actually seen the criteria for those particular activities, but that's opening on a statewide basis. Outdoor recreation, certain state parks, day-use areas, boat ramps and others will be opened, and there's always the option for county and federal parks to be opening too, and we'll probably have some discussion about that going later on. But that's happening on a statewide basis. The new stuff in terms of the counties deals with restaurants and bars. This action that we took to open, or to enter Phase One tomorrow allows restaurants and bars in the county to open, but under some very strict guidelines. Those guidelines have been established and are set forth, and they include things like distancing requirements, the manner in which service is provided, protections for employees, and the protections for patrons. So some pretty strict guidelines, but those are out there. Also, personal care, things like salons, barber shops, similar kinds of service industries are open. And again, there are some very strict physical distancing requirements. You have to make appointments, you have to provide certain PPE for your employees, or if you're an operator. Some customer listing information is required. That regulatory scheme is actually set forth and established and is available. And then yet to come are some additional guidelines, but we will be opening gyms and fitness areas. That's something we can do now that we've entered into Phase One. And then the last thing in there is that it changes the gathering requirement, that it used to be limited to 10 people, to up to 25, but it says, this is for local groups. And specifically, the guidance says no travel. And I think that's important. What does no travel mean? Well, the governor's executive order 20-12 included this language, and I thought it'd be good to put this language out as we do our discussions and consideration today. It has been in place since March, that individuals are directed to minimize travel, other than essential travel, to or from a home, residence, or workplace, for obtaining or providing food, shelter, essential consumer needs, education, healthcare, or emergency services, for essential businesses and government services, for the care of family members, household members, elderly persons, minors, dependents, persons with disabilities, or other vulnerable persons, pets, or livestock. Travel is directed by government officials, law enforcement, or courts, and other essential travel consistent with the directives of my executive orders and guidance from the Oregon Health Authority. At this point, that directive is not being changed, as we understand it. There may be some modifications, slight modifications, because people are going to be able to travel in their communities to do more retail shopping, but that's, again, local travel versus distance travel. So I think those are important parts of what Phase One means for us as we go forward. And that actually means that entering into Phase One does not change your determinations that you have to make separately on the order which prohibited short-term lodging in Lincoln County. And that's what we're here today to talk about. I will say this, we do know that entering into Phase One, it lasts for 21 days. By choosing May 15 as the date that we entered into Phase One, as long as we don't slip, as long as we don't have slideage, as long as we don't go backwards, we will be out of Phase One on June 4. I think that coincides fairly nicely with the proposed date in the order of June 1. It's a hard date to select, to begin the process of reopening lodging in the county. It would be consistent with currently what is in the governor's executive order. So I'm going to stop there, and then I think you're going to go through this thing bit by bit.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Wayne. I would say that all of that sector-specific guidance, as well as what Phase One means, is also available on the governor's Reopening Oregon page that came out earlier today, which has some good guidance, and I think we linked it to the Lincoln County page as well. All right, so now kind of getting into the meat. There are several things we need to discuss today, including a potential date for reopening lodging, and then as many of you, well, all of you should have that draft guidance that came out earlier this week, that kind of outlined some potential, I guess, changes for lodging or things we would do as we open those. So we have lots of things to discuss here, and the effort to kind of try to make this easier, we're going to kind of bite them off chunk by chunk. I think it would be kind of difficult to try to adopt the document in its entirety. I've heard from enough of you and from the public that I think there's a lot of specific issues we need to get into, so we're kind of going to take them, take it apart in pieces. Before we get started, though, I just want to do an overview of public comment, at least the ones that were received by Lincoln County staff or commissioners. We received 255 total public comments by 1:00 p.m. today. About 31 of those were basically in the context of open everything up. 115 were open up but had, but were specifically against the short-term rental items in the draft proposal. 46 were open SDRs with no new restrictions. About four were in favor of the SDR draft proposal. 48 were keep everything closed as it is for now, and then 11 were essentially saying, follow the governor's plans for reopening. Some highlights within that, the SDR, opponents of the SDR draft specifically mentioned discrimination against families. I think that has to do with limitations on occupancy and lack of COVID in the county. I'll bring that up again as we kind of get into those specific issues. So I guess, in trying to think about how to kind of organize ourselves today, which is a little bit challenging, I'm thinking maybe the first thing we ought to do is really discuss and find out where people are in terms of the date, because we have heard a lot of feedback on a potential opening date. So I thought, you know, it might be helpful to do a little bit of a straw man vote, as we did previously, when we talked about extending, just to kind of see where people are from there. And then we'll probably get into some of the kind of easier changes to discuss, like service changes and signage, housekeeping, stuff specific to RV parks and campgrounds, and then get into the restrictions specifically to hotels and motels, and then the restrictions to VRDs. So that's kind of the plan. Things may change as we go along here. As Wayne previously stated, we, with the exception of Walport, basically approved the extension of this order to May 31. Walport extended till May 15. And so that's where we are at this point.
I do have an update, I think, from Walport, just because even, they, we're not going to be able to meet at this meeting, but they told me they have it on their agenda for their meeting today to consider what to do, and it sounded like that, again, they were kind of doing a little bit of estimating from where they were and the information they were getting from their elected officials, that they likely would not extend beyond today, so beyond the 15. So that's just information for your use.
Okay, thank you. And I think at some point, they're going to try to join in when they're out of their meeting. So I guess with that in mind, just to kind of get a straw poll here, like I said, I promised to try to go south to north this time, so I guess I'd like to hear from our elected officials, just in terms of where you are on a date. So we'll kind of go through, and I guess what I would like to hear is if you want to hold that June 1 date, if you're looking to extend a possible date, shorten the date, or if you feel maybe that depends on other factors or other restrictions. And then, and then we'll kind of see where we are from there and get into some of these proposals.
Madam Chair, can I suggest that what we do first is start with the commissioners, because you're the ones that are going to be making the motions, and then we're going to see concurrence from the others. So maybe hearing from the commissioners first would be useful.
Sure, yes, we can do that. All right, Commissioner Hall, I guess you're up first?
Okay, how do I get so lucky?
Are you a hold, extend to, shorten to, or depends?
I feel like June 1 is an appropriate date to stick with, that our current order runs through that date, and the fact that we're reopening other businesses tomorrow, this will give, I think, the community a little, these businesses a little bit of time to get, bring staff back, do whatever they need to do to prepare for the influx of people that will be coming in. So right now, I'm inclined to stick with June 1.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hunt, you're on mute if you're trying to talk.
Yeah, I was on mute, thank you. Yes, I was saying it's complicated, so I have some thoughts that I want to share. You know, I'm concerned that until we have more complete testing, we really have no idea what the prevalence of the virus is in our county. Our county faces a health pandemic crisis and an economic crisis, economic devastation. And I believe one of the worst outcomes of a reopening would be a surge in the number of cases resulting in a forced reclosure of the entire county. As of today, the county has tested 971 individuals, or less than 10% of our county population. So if you're standing in a room of 100 people, two of them have been tested and are virus-free, assuming that they haven't had exposure and become infected since they were tested. So until we have better scientific data as to the presence of the virus, I support a gradual reopening, and I support addressing health issues first, because again, if we see a surge in the virus, we'll suffer in even more economic, more severe economic consequences as a result of a forced closure. As I stated at the Board of Commissioners meeting earlier this week, I believe one way to have a gradual reopening of the county would be a phased reopening of the hospitality industry. And to me, hotels, motels, and campgrounds represent one of the two groups that could be reopened on June 1. I'm okay with that. With the SDRs reopening on June 22, which would be consistent with the governor's sequence of Phase One and Phase Two reopenings. These two groups are presently being treated differently under the current county-wide order, and I believe that the presence of onsite management, staff, and other support aspects make reopening of this group a better step. I'd also like to reference a New York Times article, it was in Wednesday's edition, yesterday's edition, and it says, quote, "There have been only two proven approaches to stopping the virus's spread so far. One is extreme social distancing, like the lockdown that has been in effect across much of the United States since March. The other is an intricate program of testing, tracking, and quarantining, as parts of Asia have done. Right now, large parts of the U.S. are moving toward ending their lockdowns before it's wise to do so, according to many epidemiologists. Perhaps the biggest, perhaps the biggest problem, despite the recent increase in tests, the county is still doing, excuse me, the country is still doing far fewer than are likely needed to avoid new outbreaks." So I believe it's extremely important that whatever is decided today, we all come to a consensus, and we have a uniform plan for the county and all cities. I feel that a plan with differing dates and varying criteria is a plan for disaster. Finally, my guiding principle continues to be that the loss of a loved one, the death of a loved one, would be far more devastating than the economic loss due to the coronavirus. So I support June 1 for the hotel, motels, campgrounds, and a later reopening of June 22 for the short-term rentals.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hunt.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Hunt.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, if I could, one thing I guess I didn't address in my initial comments, and I just want to acknowledge, and I hope people realize, the tough choices that all of us are wrestling with here, every single elected official here today. But I am going to respectfully disagree with my colleague, Commissioner Hunt. I really don't see any good justification from a scientific standpoint to treat vacation rentals differently than other classes of lodging. I know, I can imagine people listening right now and saying, yeah, but I don't want somebody infected in the house across the street or the house next door. But you know, there are different risks and different factors with each type of lodging. You know, in a hotel with a shared lobby, elevator, and hallways, I think there's going to be a lot more mixing of people than having one, one family unit or other group in a vacation rental. So for that reason, my vote would be to begin a phased opening of all lodging on the 1st.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hall. I would just say where I'm at, I would want to hold that June 1 opening as we had extended to previously. I would probably lump hotels, motels, campgrounds, and VRDs together for that, but I do have some specific things I want to talk about from the draft rules around reopening. So that discussion on those potential rules is important. For me, my reason for a June 1 date is that in Phase One of reopening nonessential travel is still prohibited, so you aren't supposed to be vacationing. You're supposed to be mostly staying in your immediate area. Additionally, if we extended out several days to match that 21 days, we'd land, I think, on a Thursday, and I think we'd be slammed. I think actually keeping to the June 1 date, which is a Monday, would give people at least part of a week to kind of prepare for potentially large crowds coming on that weekend. With that, then I think I will start on the South Coast with Yahut's. So Mayor Moore?
Yes, I'm here. So do you want a straw poll of our individual council members, or do you want a vote?
I think we're going to do a straw poll from, for now.
Okay, that sounds fine. Let me start with Councilor Glenn. Are you on the line, Max?
Are you on the line, Max? Unmute yourself. I think he was muted earlier. Okay, let's go to Councilor Tuke.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, back to Councilor Glenn. Yeah, we can hear you now, Max.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was unmuted earlier.
So what are your, what are your thoughts?
My thoughts are to stay with the June 1st for all lodging. However, I must say that the, one of the pieces of information that we received was rather persuasive with me, and it was suggesting that the vacation rentals be opened first because it would confine everyone into one house. And so that was a pretty persuasive argument, but I still, it did not convince me, and so I would go with June the 1st for everything.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Glenn. Councilor Tuke?
Well, yes, I'm on, I have obviously mixed emotions about this. I do look at the idea that the Lincoln County has been granted, the governor has agreed to allow Lincoln County to go into Phase 1 as of the 15th, and we are still, as a county, restricting certain things until the 31st. One of my concerns is some of our neighboring counties have yet to be granted the authority to enter the Phase 1 restrictions, I mean, lifting, enter the Phase 1 part of this gradual reopening. That does concern me a little bit. I don't know what kind of travel would be appropriate. I understand that the travel restriction is supposed to still be in place. I'm a little bit concerned about the number of people that showed up in Cannon Beach on the first sunny weekend of around 700 people or something, and basically Cannon Beach had to shut down. So I'm a little concerned about those issues. But I think I would stand with the rest of the commissioners, the majority of the commissioners, and the majority of the leaders of the various cities in supporting the June 1st lifting of restrictions on lodging. So that's my take. I'm certainly willing to listen to everybody else's input and maybe change my mind, but at that point, at this point, that's what I'm considering.
Great, thank you, Councilor Tuke. Councilor Voller, your thoughts?
Yes, yes, like all of us, I am sure I have pulled in many ways by all of the messages we've got, and I want to tell the people who wrote them that I have looked at all of them. And I appreciated the one that said, at one point, you all must be exhausted. In terms of my thoughts, I would like to see a later date than June 1. I think that if the essential travel restriction really were enforceable, that it might not be so important. But I'm afraid that people will come, and unless we're having restrictions to somehow only letting people stay who are from our county at the hotels and vacation rentals, I think that we're going to, in a sense, be enabling the lifting of some of this travel restriction. The city of Yahutz has a high-risk population. Depending where you look, our median age is 60 or older. There are additional people who are in the high-risk population for other reasons. I stand with Doug Hunt on saying that we have to think about safety first, even though I am definitely hearing the pain of the people who would like to get the economy open.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Councilor. Uh, Councilor O'Shaughnessy?
Well, like all of us, I've given this a lot of thought, in particular today, and I, I do want to, I think I'm not going to make a decision right now. I want to listen to other people, because here's my concerns. In Yahutz, as in many of our cities, we have a high-risk population, as Leslie just said. 45% of those in Yahutz are over 65. There are other people that are younger, that have secondary conditions that would influence it. In order to have any type of data that you can generalize, who, the infection rate, you have to test 60% of your population. We are nowhere near that in the country or in Oregon. There's no doubt in my mind that once we open, the lodges, people are going to come because we're the coast and we're beautiful. So if you look at, I look at this through health, safety, and welfare. So in terms of health, we have a virus, it's infectious and it's deadly. And so, and we've got a lot of reasons to be very careful in what we do. And then we have safety, and for safety, you need contact, be able to do contact testing, testing, and vaccine, all of which we're not doing too well right now. But the last one that I gave a lot of thought to, and I'm going to read something I wrote, because I have to think when I, I have to write to think. "The economic state we find ourselves in has significant danger for those who are medium to low income. They are facing both food instability and housing instability. The housing instability has the potential to increase the state homeless population. As well during stressful economic times, the rate of mental health issues, drug and alcohol issues, suicide, child abuse, and spouse abuse increases," and we have seen that here. That's where, that's the rub for me in terms of not extending, is I think people do need to get back to work. But it's like a lose-lose choice we have here in a way. And so I'm still thinking, to be honest with you, and really am interested in hearing what other people have to say.
Thank you, Councilor O'Shaughnessy. And speaking for myself, you know, by June 1st, in nine weeks since we had all of our hotels, motels, and vacation rentals to close, that's nine weeks without the income. I'm sensitive to and agree with everyone else's concerns about health and safety of our residents. That's part and parcel with some of the restrictions that have been recommended. I'm in favor of a June 1st date for both hotels, motels, and vacation rentals for an opening.
This is Mary Ann. I'd like to add one more thing. The other thing that really concerns me is enforcement, is I don't know what the enforcement's going to be. And when it comes to vacation rentals, I think the majority of the people that own vacation rentals are very responsible. But let's face it, we have some that can't even get their lawn mowed. So in terms of trusting that they're going to follow any guidelines, I have not much hope, quite honestly. So I'd like to hear some comments on, is there any type of enforcement that's been talked about? Because we can have all the guidelines we want, but if there's no enforcement, that's problematic.
Okay.
Okay. I would, can we, thank you, Yahutz, again. We're just kind of doing a straw poll, so I'm going to go ahead and move on. I don't think anyone from Walport has joined us. Nope, I think they're still in their meeting. I do think that we had someone from Suletts, I think I heard the mayor join us.
Yeah, this is Mayor Warman, I'm here.
Yeah, so we're just taking a straw poll on holding the date to June 1, extending the date, loosening the date, or if you need to wait to hear other discussion.
Well, from the, we have a lot of lodging, but we do have, I mean, we do travel throughout the county and run into people that would be lodging. So, I mean, I, I think we're, I tend to have the same feeling that June 1st is, at the very least, June 1st. There's no, there's no essential or non-essential. If we're not supposed to be traveling, what's the point of opening the hotels and private rentals at this point? And they should all be lumped together, whether it's a little cabin somewhere or a hotel room, it should all be the same. We aren't allowing people to travel, so there's no point in having hotels open, because as soon as we do, they're all coming.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else on the phone from Suletts? Okay, I was just passing out that requesting if I could move on to Newport next, I think you have a city council member that's got to leave fairly soon. So with that in mind, we'll go ahead and do that. So CM Hall?
Hi, this is CM. I'm, I also love this is more, and yes, I am the one who has to leave in about 10 minutes, but at this point, June 1st.
Okay, Cynthia Jacoby?
Okay, yes, Cynthia Jacoby. I support following the governor's guidelines, basically, and not opening up until the first part of June. Mr. Belmont had suggested June 4th, which would be the ending of the three weeks from the 15th of May. And I think it would be very difficult to separate out the short-term rentals from the hotels and motels legally. So I think they should be all in one group. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Parker?
Ryan, Ryan's over.
I'm sorry, what?
Ryan isn't able to join us yet.
Oh, he's not here yet, okay. How about Beatrice?
I hear, okay. I, it's a very hard and challenging decision. I have been listening, you know, comments that are not getting to the city, and it has been very challenging for many, many individuals in this community. I wish we could open, you know, sooner, but listening, you know, Rebecca's message, you know, the coordination, they have to put the plan together with all the businesses, and only having like a 26 people staff, and they're, you know, with this coordination is very hard. And I just kind of want to say that for many families, it has been very challenging not being able to pay for rent or basic. But I, I feel opening June 1st will be good for lodging.
Ryan Parker?
Okay, so you're June 1. Thank you, Beatrice.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we heard you. Okay, how about Deep Mar?
Hello, this is Deep Mar.
We can't see, I mean, we found the lodge on our placemat, but we can't see.
If you could please mute your phone, if you're not Deep Mar, mute your phone. Thank you. Okay, Deep Mar, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what it's all about. Anyway, I'm, as you know, I've, I've been one to advocate for early opening, and I think, I'm hearing all the people out there, they're suffering financially, especially our occupancy people, and I'm not sure they can last another two weeks, June 1. I personally would like to see it's open as soon as possible. A lot of our service people are not on, are not getting unemployment money, so they have no money, they're just relying on, a lot of them are relying on the school district for food. So I would, my personal feeling is I would like to see all the motel, motels, and VRDs open as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you, Deep Mar. Jumping back to Ryan, who I think joined us. And Ryan, we're asking, we're just taking a straw man here, and basically, we're asking you to see if you want to hold the June 1st, extend that, resend that, or something else.
Well, I've been thinking at great lengths about this, and I think we need to give the hoteliers an opportunity to show their plans are, can be rolled out, and I guess I'm in favor of an opening sooner with a way for the hotels to have spacing between occupied rooms. I don't think full occupancy would be good, maybe half, up to 50% for now. And with the household location verbiage for vacation rentals, I'm in favor of opening those up as well prior to June 1st.
Okay, thank you. All right, circling back to Toledo who we missed. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot the mayor. Oh, no. Goodness. All right, sorry, Mayor Sawyer.
That's okay, you can always go beyond it. Before I get, before I say anything, I'd like to declare a potential conflict of interest. I do own a home share. I've had it closed the entire time under the county order and city order. I have turned people away. I have made a personal decision that I will not open it June 1st if that's the date that's selected. I will wait two weeks at a minimum before I do open it. If you decide a different date, I will go two weeks beyond that. That's my personal decision. What I would like to, I agree with the June 1st date. I also want to thank the hard work that Lincoln County has done, Lincoln County Public Health, the Oregon Health Authority, and the governor's office for figuring all this Phase 1 out. I know it's been a very long and tedious ordeal by them, and I really appreciate all their hard work. I think that we need a buffer between May 15th and June 1st for the local restaurants, the gift stores in town to kind of get their stock back up, their employees back to work, and get ready for that June 1st date. So I, that's why I think that the June 1st is a good date, now that we're, now that we know that people can open tomorrow, which I don't have a problem with, but I do like to have a short-term buffer there. I also think that the short-term rental should be the same as hotels and motels and RV parks. And I would also say that, that, I'm trying to figure it out. Oh, the occupancy level, I believe, should be how they are licensed currently by their jurisdictions. And finally, I'd like to say that if there's any further breakout, and I know that Lincoln County Public Health and the Oregon Health Authority will be monitoring that very closely, that we would, again, I would encourage us all convene again to consider our decision, no matter what that is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry I skipped you. All right, moving on to Toledo, Mayor Cross?
Yes, Katie. I'll go through a roll call. Bill Dolby, your thoughts?
I can support a June 1st opening. I think it's important that there will be, by then, there will have been two weeks of other businesses being open. And I think based on the increase in cases that we are bound to see, I agree with Mayor Sawyer that we should have the opportunity to reevaluate that date.
Thank you, Bill. Heather Jukic?
I agree with Phil. I really think we need to see how Phase 1 goes, and if, frankly, if we can handle it. And I really think that the next sunny weekend with the news out that Lincoln County's open, we're going to have a flock of people here. And just, I think we should see how it goes and reserve a decision for after we have more information.
Thank you. Sari Kamakawa?
I concur with the June 1st opening. I was on an economic call this afternoon, early this afternoon, with the chambers of commerce, and we sent those businesses scrambling by opening tomorrow. And we can avoid the hotels being in the same situation and the, and the vacation rentals being in the same situation as scrambling by not, by waiting two weeks. I think that's okay. Past that, I don't see any point, and I don't see any point in limiting the number of people because you're not going to know where that virus is coming from anywhere, anyway, because we're just, we're way behind in our testing, and it's not going to change. We just don't have the ability to increase it in this state, apparently. So we just need clear guidelines for the hotels and the vacation rentals to follow so that they can open. Thank you.
Josh Smith, are you on? Jackie Kaufman? Thank you to Mayor Sawyer. You made the speech I wanted to make. My wife would say, great minds think alike, not quite sure about that. But I really believe that June 1st is a good date to set. I agree with virtually everyone on that. As we move forward, the testing and the contact tracing are going to be vital. Any way we look at it here on the coast, the contact tracing is going to be. Um, any way we look at it here on the coast, the contact tracing is going to be huge and we're going to have to, in my opinion, we're gonna need more than what the state has mandated, at least for communities such as ours. And I hope that those resources will be coming and with that, I will pass it off to whoever's next.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, all right, going up to Depot Bay, Mayor Gambino?
Yes, thank you. And thank you to everyone, as Dean said, thank you to everyone that's working so hard on all this. Um, I'm gonna try and keep it simple and short and I would ask that our council do the same. I'm already down to a little over 50% battery on my phone. I'm not technologically advanced, so, uh, if you don't hear me at some point, it means I'm changing batteries. I do have an extra one. Um, I simply vote for June 1st. I think that makes sense. Uh, it gives some people to prepare to try and assume that we could do it tomorrow. It's gonna be the fast thinkers that are gonna be first and I think we need to make it pretty even for everyone. Uh, I do have some concerns on the opening restrictions. I'll talk about that when we get to opening restrictions. And at this point, let's turn it over to the council. Uh, Councilor Callender?
Yes, I'm here. I think June 1st is, is good. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and Counselor Goddard?
June 1st.
All right, thank you. Counselor King?
Yes, I would agree, June 1st, but for all housing, including short-term rentals.
All right, thank you. Counselor Grant? Counselor Grant, are you there?
See, I had it on mute, sorry. I just wanted to be sure of, of one thing and this is a, just a short question to Chair Jacobs. Is, the way I understand it is that statewide, the short-term rentals slash hotels have never been closed statewide, but the governor has given the latitude to, to the counties to make these decisions on their own. Is, is, am I correct?
Yes, Governor Brown did never make an order that closed hotels or lodging, uh, directly. So it was counties and cities and other municipalities that did that themselves.
Right, and the governor's given that latitude. So, um, I, I haven't, I have two hats here as a counselor in Depot Bay. I also own, uh, uh, two establishments here in Depot Bay. Uh, I laid off 80 employees on the 17th of March. Um, and as far as the timing of the opening, people getting ready, ready, well, we've had since March 17th to get ready for this opening and frankly, uh, my businesses won't open until, uh, one of them probably won't open until June 1st, uh, anyway, but the other might open in, uh, on, uh, next Friday for, uh, Memorial Day weekend. So I'm saying, I guess, from this council's point of view, I don't think it, I, I think coming up, because there's, uh, I don't think it would make any difference anyway, is that, uh, I would be for an earlier opening, that being Saturday, the, uh, going into the, the long weekend. So that would be Saturday, the 23rd is when I would be for opening up for the rentals and no restrictions. And I really appreciate some of the thoughtful, uh, decision-making from the other counselors that I've heard, particularly Ms., uh, uh, Councilwoman O'Shaughnessy. I shout her out and I, I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Hall's thoughts on this. And, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Back to you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, uh, I'm not sure you told us where you were.
Who, me?
All right, on to Lincoln City, uh, Mayor Anderson?
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Um, a couple of things, uh, before I call our role, um, if not everybody knows, the, uh, the tribe is gonna open the casino on, uh, May 21st along with their, uh, housing, lodging. Also, the, uh, reminder that the county, Lincoln County's got the highest unemployment rate in the state. Um, the executive order for essential travel only still exists and that, uh, not all businesses were forced to close. Many of them chose to close just as a sake of safety and I think that's still prominent in people's thinking of when they will open. So with that information, uh, Counselor Marks, uh, where are you?
Just a reminder, if your name, if your name is not Rick Mark, to please mute your phone. Thank you.
My name is Rick Mark and I have unmuted my phone.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I, I'll go along with the, the June 1st, um, little warm, uh, where businesses open and people will be coming here the next two weeks, so like, we're gonna have day trippers. Uh, I am concerned, um, about people not wearing masks and not avoiding, you're feeling like, oh, this is all over and we can get away without worrying about all the, the guidelines. And, uh, and, and a big part of my concern there is that we might be putting an unfair burden on local law enforcement because I think there's a, a point where there's only so much they can do. I, I, I was in one store yesterday, saw nobody wearing a mask. I was in another, Freddie's this morning and almost everybody was wearing a mask. So I, I felt pretty good about that. Um, I, I, I made a lot of notes here, but I, I'll jump to the bottom and, and that is, uh, I'll, I'll vote yes to open on June 1st, but that, I'm doing that with the understanding that, that means that people from the valley are gonna be coming down here, whether they're, we have a ban on non-essential travel or not. And that means that the virus is gonna be coming down here as well and that means people are gonna be getting sick. And, um, I, I understand that we, we can't keep the businesses closed forever and I just see this as a risk that, that we're gonna be taking and, uh, there, there are gonna be some unhappy and maybe tragic, uh, results from this. So, but I, I, I think we need to get back to business.
Rick, would you see a difference, uh, with the rollout? Different lodging type?
Not sure where you're asking there.
Uh, how, there's, right now, there's a distinction between hotels, motels and vacation rentals? Would you do it all at the same time?
Yeah, I would do it all at the same time. I, 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 I kinda bought into the argument, uh, from a lot of the VRD people that, uh, in many situations that the VRDs might be safer than the hotels. I, I do like the idea of keeping that, uh, cap on, uh, six people or whatever the number is. I know we've had a lot of, um, concern in the emails about that number, but I think that's a way to, uh, keep a control on the numbers coming down here, at least at first. We can expand it later and also, I think it's really important to have, um, uh, a rest time or whatever you wanna call it between the use of the rooms. So whether, I don't know what works there. The health officials can tell us. Forty, uh, 24 hours, 48 hours, 72 hours. I got another way to, to limit the, the occupancy. I think that's, uh, as we phase in here, I think those are both good ideas.
All right, well, we'll, we'll go through those restrictions later. Right now, it's just the date and if it's all the, going out at the same time. Counselor Casper? You, you may still be on mute?
Yes, I was on mute. Um, actually, I'm, I'm looking at May 29th opening up. Uh, I didn't know about the casino opening on the 21st. I do understand that Seaside is opening up, um, their short-term rentals as of May 29th. I think since we're giving up the, um, Memorial Day weekend and the casino will be opening prior to that, that opening on the 29th would allow more time for, um, short-term rentals and hotels, opening them all at once, to, um, begin opening their businesses. And, um, I, I think that the short-term rental should be, the occupancy should be according to their license and I agree with the caller from Toledo that talked about contact tracing. I think that will be the absolute key and to get hotel owners and lodging owners to accept that and embrace it and do it.
Thank you. Counselor Hinton?
Hi, um, I have, I have a few ideas and, um, to tie to my idea that perhaps June 1st would be fine. One, um, is that we haven't discussed at all about what I think is maybe the key, um, piece to this, which is tying our opening of the lodging industry to those counties where we receive guests, um, or visitors or tourists or their, and all of their names, like Clackamas, Montloma, Washington, Marion County in Oregon and Clark County in Washington. As far as, um, my research goes, is they are not flattening, they are not going down the downward curve and so we will be inviting folks from those, um, counties without knowing, knowing that they have, um, more virus cases than we do. So it's something we should think about. I think we should also tie, tie to a pause for the, um, for all lodging and a pause between the checkout of one guest and the house, before the housekeepers come in to clean of four to five days. We know the virus lives at least that long and we really need to protect our, um, residents. So I would wanna make sure that there'd be a pause between the guest and when the cleaning can commence. And the other thing is, um, we talked about just a little bit about face covering and I think that it should be mandatory throughout the county for all businesses, uh, not just lodging, but to include lodging, for the employees as well as the customers, um, to wear face covering. And, um, there's nothing we can do about the non-essential travel. Um, that annoys me to great extent, um, but people are coming here already constantly. Um, and then the fourth thing would be enforcement, which I think we need to have a discussion about. And so with those things, I would say June 1st.
And the same, all together?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Hoagland?
Hello? Well, thank, um, you know, I, thank you all. Uh, I believe that, um, the, we, there's, there's conditions with this opening, um, having the VRDs separate and limited to hotels. I'm, I'm not in favor of that. I feel all rentals should be, um, open at the capacity of which they are licensed for. I feel like, um, the conditions of mask-wearing should be in place as well. I, I, I understand the contact tracing is gonna be very important and, um, feel like, um, that, sorry, just to get it all together and, um, hold on, that, I, mm, sorry, I, I forgot what I was, my bread was, but I feel like masks should be important. The, oh, coming back to it at a later date, sorry. Um, I, I think someone else spoke about it, that if, if we're gonna open, if we're gonna say they're gonna open short-term rentals June 4th, I feel like we ought to be able to come back and see the next two weeks how things are. I'd be in favor of that, so, um, but it's still a little early for me, but that's where I am. Opening, uh, June 4th, fourth with conditions.
So you're June 4th?
Well, with, with whatever council had and, you know, I would love to see our short-term rental coincide with our Oregon Health Authority, the rollout plan that Lincoln County Health Authority just put out today about wearing masks. So I would like to see that be a part, part, part of that.
Okay. Counselor Kuz?
Okay, I'll make it short and simple because everybody has really said the cases that we're listening to. I would go with a May 29th, um, and all in.
Okay. Counselor Parsons?
Uh, this was a quick straw poll. I'll just say that I am for June 1st at the absolute latest for all categories.
Okay. And I am the same. I'm a June 1st, all categories.
Okay, thank you, Lincoln City. Uh, have we had anyone from the tribe join us? Okay, just wanted to circle back and see if they were here. Um, my understanding is we probably do need to go back and take a vote on a date. I'm looking at Wayne.
Yeah, I, I think you heard a, a few different, uh, ideas, although if I was listening right, the majority of the folks, um, look like they would support June 1st.
Okay, so even though we're, um, the order we have currently in place expires on May 31st, we would still need a vote to then open on June 1st or do you just allow that to lapse?
Well, no, the, the draft first with the set of conditions that you agree upon.
Got it. Okay. All right, well, um, then with that in mind, um, I think we're gonna start, I think we're gonna start getting into kinda some additional, um, meat here. Um, it's gonna be complicated to have a, a true kinda dialogue with this many people on the phone, but, um, I'm going to take these off in chunks, um, which means we'll probably have kinda multiple, um, voting or orders so that we can kinda move through these as we go, um, 'cause I think it's gonna be incredibly difficult, at least from what I heard in the straw vote, just to adopt this whole document, um, all at once. Um, so with that being said, if, um, people wanna kinda follow along here, I'm gonna start, um, on kinda page one of that draft framework, uh, under service changes and I will go ahead and, and read those. If you don't have them in front of you, that's okay. Um, I'm gonna lump service changes and signage, um, together. Um, I'll read those both and then we'll, um, essentially kinda go through by organization and vote on potentially adopting those. Um, then we'll move on to, um, to, uh, I think our V parks and campgrounds, which are actually on the back, and then into those restrictions for hotels, motels, um, and housekeeping standards as well. So first, we're gonna bite off service changes and signage. Um, so I'll, I will read them. Hotels, uh, motels, uh, remote check-in if available, alternative curbside check-in with conditions below, uh, touch, touch-free check-in instituted, barrier in place at check-in like Plexiglas, hand sanitizer in lobby, employee wellness checks, health questions and temp checks, uh, at the start of each day. Breakfast, if there's a breakfast service, it would have grab and go slash sealed items slash room service, no public space consumption. Um, STR slash VRDs would have a remote, um, check-in. I would just add that, um, RV parks and campgrounds were not kind of included in this and probably should be in terms of having some type of remote check-in or if they can't do that, um, you know, touch-free check-in and, and the barrier in place and that kinda thing. Um, on to signage, hotels, motels, and again, I would add RV parks in this. Uh, COVID health sign at entrances and check-in, same templates to be provided, public spaces closed, more detailed designation, no public in spas, gyms, lounges or seating areas, all cordoned off and signed appropriately. STRs and VRDs, um, home shares and bed and breakfast, COVID health signage posted on front entrance, sign templates to be provided. All right, um, so in terms of adopting just those kinda two, um, pieces, uh, service changes, um, to hotels, motels, uh, RV parks and STRs, VRDs, as well as signage requirements for hotels, motels, RV parks, uh, STRs and VRDs, um, starting with the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, can I get a motion to adopt those two things?
This is Commissioner Hall. I would so move.
Do I have a...
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hunt. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? All right, motion passes. Thank you. Um, and, and as we go along from jurisdiction, if you need me to read it again to refresh your memory, just let me know. Uh, okay, moving on to Yahutts. I will turn it over to the mayor to vote on that.
Uh, members of the Yahutts, uh, city council, I would entertain a motion to approve the proposed service changes in, and... service changes in, and signage, just read by Commissioner Jacobson.
Signage and service changes, yes.
Yes.
I so move.
Thank you, Counselor Glenn. All in favor? Aye. Opposed by nay? No opposition, passed unanimously.
Thank you. Anyone from Walport on yet? Okay, so let's with Mayor Worman. I don't think you have a corn on the phone, if I'm correct. So I think we'll, we'll skip over you and hopefully you guys can take that back and ratify that later.
Yes, I'll do it tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to Toledo. Mayor Cross, I'll turn it over to you.
I would entertain a motion on the service changes and. Second? Is there a second?
I second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the service changes and the signage in the Exhibit A. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes 4-0.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Newport, I'll pass it over to Mayor Sawyer.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion for adopting the service and signage as discussed by Commissioner Jacobson. Anyone want to make that motion?
Cynthia Jacoby.
Do I hear a second?
Taken. You have three.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Depot Bay. Is our mayor still on the phone or did we lose a battery?
No, it's still got 43%. Thank you. Okay, council, at this point, I would entertain a motion, however, Chair, I would, I would like to simply advise, and I don't believe this takes a separate motion, everywhere else we talk about pools as well, and that second bullet point under signage, it just says no public in spas, gyms, lounges, or seating. Would include pools in that. But otherwise, yeah, okay. And calendar, or excuse me, we need a, a motion to approve.
I'll move.
All right, moved by Ken. Seconded by who?
Lauren.
Goddard. Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes.
And any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, and, and good catch on the pools. I do think pools are still closed by the state at this point, I think.
Could be, could be.
Wayne, do you, do we need to go back and amend the motion that the other cities just made?
Unless there's any request for this, because what we're going to do is we're going through and making these motions. I'm going to, I'm making changes as necessary if there's any changes in this. Then you're going to have the board adopt this and we'll go back through for one final vote to get concurrence from the cities on the thing with any changes that we make.
Okay, so thus far, we have changes around adding signage and service changes to RV parks and campgrounds as well, and then the pools. Okay.
Yep, both of those.
All right, up to Lincoln City, Mayor Anderson.
All right, I would entertain a motion to adopt the service changes and signage in Exhibit A.
This is Mitch. So moved.
Is there a second?
Rick Markel, second.
How about in our case, discussion?
I, uh, mayor, I just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Deanna.
Um, I just want to say that I like the addition of.
We, we're not getting you.
Can you hear me?
No, stand still.
I am.
Oh.
Okay, all I'm saying is that I like the campground and the addition of pool.
Yeah. And Rick, you had something you wanted to say or ask about?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that we're going to get through the restrictions category next and pools, spas, gyms, that's where the pools are already listed there, so I don't think we need to change anything up above.
I, I would ask the question in this, though, hot tubs, that seems to be absent on this rendition. So, you know, at one time, that seemed to be a hot issue of not having hot tubs in VRDs. So I'm, I'm assuming by it not being mentioned that it's okay to have hot tubs in VRDs.
That's correct.
Is, okay.
Does that include what a spa is, though?
The spa is what I think normally is what they're designated in a, in a hotel motel. It could be spa, hot tub, it's the same thing.
I don't, did somebody mute the background? Anyway, but Wayne, I guess I would beg to differ because a spa in a hotel is public use, multiple public, and in a hot, in a hot tub in a VRD is just, you know, one family.
Yeah, I agree. No, so what we did is we left the, the language on spas and hotels, motels, but we removed the hot tub from VRD, so it's no longer regulated.
All right. Oh, great. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, then all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, we got through that one. Moving on, we're going to pick off housekeeping minimums for both STRs, VRDs in hotels. So I will go ahead and read these if you're following along. This is on the bottom of, of page two here. Housekeeping minimums for both STRs/VRDs in hotels, use of CDC/EP, EPA-approved disinfectant, sanitizing all high-touch items in guest rooms, door handles, elevator buttons, et cetera, gloves for housekeepers, linen washed with approved disinfectant chemicals at correct temperatures, removal of paper products, any required items are laminated and cleaned or replaced, hair dryers removed from bag, dryer cleaned at each checkout, all unused linen and terry cloth are removed and exchanged. Required cleanup if guests suspected of having COVID-19, positive, presumptive, or symptomatic for all lodging properties and times, clean room in accordance with OHA guidelines, current guidelines shown in link below. All right, starting with the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, can I get a motion on that?
I would move to adopt the housekeeping minimums for both short-term rentals and hotels and motels as proposed in Exhibit A.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. All right, back down to Yahutz, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
I would entertain a motion to approve the housekeeping minimums for VRDs and hotels. Do I hear such a motion?
John, can I make, discuss a point on it first? This is Counselor Waller. So there have been several people who have mentioned a desire to have some sort of a holding clean of a, a hold between rentals. This was in fact in an earlier draft, I believe, of the, um, no names are available restrictions. So I certainly cannot support it as it stands without some sort of a hold between rentals. I know that some individual hotels still might choose to do that for safety of their people, but I think we should add that. I don't know if anyone else has any discussion on it, but I'll be voting no unless we make some sort of modification on that.
Do you have a particular recommendation on the timeframe that you had in mind?
Well, I will start the discussion, I guess, with what was in an earlier draft, which was that for hotels, there was supported being a two-night minimum length stay and a 72-hour cleaning hold, and for VRDs, there was a three-night minimum length of stay and a 48-hour cleaning hold.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Waller. Counselor Glenn, I want to ask you your take on the extra things that Counselor Waller brought up. Not all of the housekeeping minimums, just that one item?
I would vote in the negative on the, on her addition. I'm ready to vote on it as it is.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Glenn. Counselor Tuke, your thoughts? Counselor Tuke, you're muted.
I would recommend a 24-hour hold at a minimum.
Thank you, Counselor Tuke. Counselor O'Shaughnessy.
I would agree with Leslie. Well, yeah, I would agree with Leslie.
To go for the full 72 hours?
I, I, I guess I'm more comfortable with 48 hours, but then we have 24, 48, and 72, so.
Well.
I think there does need to be some time between the people checking out, at least 24, if not 48 hours. 72 may be going too far, but I don't know the scientific data on this.
Commissioner Jacobson. I'm, I'm actually leaning toward 24 hours. So we don't have a consensus here. Can we take a bye for now and have you go on to the other cities and come back to Yahutz?
Yes, in fact, I was going to ask if our, our Health Department Director Rebecca was still on the phone.
I am still on the phone.
Oh, thank you. Just a question for you. I think someone made the question of not, not having the data. Do we have specific information? I know there's a lot of information out there right now, but do you know the correct answer of like how long this virus can live on surfaces and that sort of a thing?
Well, I don't think there's anything specific because different surfaces have different time periods. So that's the last I heard anyhow. Hard surfaces tend, it tends to live longer than on soft surfaces. So I would have to get back to everybody on where we are with that. I'd have to refer probably to the CDC if anybody.
Okay, thank you. And yes, Mayor Moore will go ahead and take a hold there. I'm actually going to ask that we take like a five-minute recess, if that's all right, just to get up and stretch legs and that kind of stuff, and then we'll come back. So five-minute recess and then we'll, we'll come back and continue this. All right, we are back from recess. Thanks, everybody, just for giving your chair a little bit of a break there. Kind of in, in thinking through this in the last few minutes, we do start to be kind of jumping into the discussion on potential restrictions. You know, I thought the housekeeping piece might be a little easier just to kind of pass and get through, but like I said, I think the conversation is just turning into restrictions. So I'm going to go ahead and just hit the pause button on talking about housekeeping and we're going to go ahead and jump into kind of a discussion on restrictions. So again, if you're following along, I'm on page two under restrictions. I will read hotel motel restrictions. Again, this is just a draft, and then the STR, VRDs, home shares, bed and breakfast restrictions. Restrictions for hotels, motels, employees required to wear face coverings when in public areas, when in presence of guests, guests encouraged to wear face covering in public places while in town per State of Oregon's guidance. Template language to be provided, communicated prior to arrival electronically and/or via phone. No stayover guest room service, two persons per bed, no more than four per room, person is two years of age or older. or older. Pools, spas, gyms, and any other recreational amenities stay closed. Staff must be able to maintain a social distance from each other and workstations and meet all other business guidelines as set by the state or local health authority. STRs, VRDs, home shares, and bed and breakfast. Employers required to wear face coverings at all times when in presence of guests, excuse me, employees required to wear face coverings at all times when in presence of guests. Guests required to wear a face covering when in shared spaces and home shares and bed and breakfast and encouraged to wear while in public via State of Oregon guidance. Communicated prior to, prior to arrival electronically and/or via phone. Two persons per bed limit on occupancy of six persons, no matter what license provides, unless occupancy is lower under license. Lower limit applies. Um, two household members only. This limit is for all occupants at any time in STR slash VRD. Person is two years of age or older. Bed and breakfast and homestays, no communal meals. Um, all right, so I guess I'll start with, um, discussion from my fellow commissioner, commissioners?
Katie?
Yes?
Katie, uh, real quick, uh, there's an incongruity here, uh, under restrictions, bullet point three, no stayover guest room service, and then back under service changes, um, where'd it go here? Oh, under breakfast, you list room service as an option.
Oh, you are correct. I see that. Yeah, so under, uh, under service, go ahead. Do you have a comment? Go ahead, Wayne.
Right. No, I see that. That is inconsistent. So, it'd have to be one or the other.
And I think on what we just, uh, we already did a motion on all of that through everybody, uh, for service changes and, um, and signage, and we did approve this kind of room service piece with no public space consumption.
So, then line that out.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mayor Cross. Good catch. Uh, okay, I guess we're just gonna kind of open it up for discussion here. I will do this kind of jurisdiction by jurisdiction. Um, so Commissioner Hall, kind of comments, thoughts, et cetera, on restrictions?
Most, but not all of this makes sense with me, to me, and I can support it. I don't understand why we're saying people, uh, younger than two can't come if they're part of a family unit.
No, they're not counted as a person. That's, that's standard language in, in licensing.
Oh, okay. Okay, so it's not prohibiting. Okay.
No, they're not prohibiting, yeah.
That makes sense. Well, well, okay, then. I guess the one issue and the one thing I can't support under restrictions is putting a six-person limit on occupancy in a short-term rental or, uh, VRD. Uh, again, these are often, you know, as we know, very large homes where each individual has more square footage than they would in a standard, uh, hotel or motel room, and, uh, you know, frankly, let, uh, minimal to no interaction with others outside of their, uh, you know, their family or group unit. So, so that's one thing I would, I would oppose in this.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hall. Commissioner Hunt?
I'm comfortable with, uh, restrictions as they're presented. I think the six-person limit is a way to, um, help, uh, contain the number of people that'll come to the county, potentially providing, uh, exposure to the virus. And, um, I frankly, um, people that come and stay, whether it's a hotel, motel, or VRD, they go out and interact in the community and engage in activities in the county. So, um, I think, uh, the six-person limit is, uh, one way to help address the, um, number of people that come and potential spread of the virus, which we seem to all agree is still of great concern.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hunt. Uh, my thoughts is, uh, first of all, I, I do agree that we need to kind of clean up that child language. Um, I had several emails asking me why we wouldn't allow children to visit, so I just think we need to make it cleaner. That says, uh, children under two does not count as a person. Of course, they're people, but I think we just need to, to clean that up a little bit. Um, obviously, we need to clean up the room service being, um, consistent with what we just, um, passed earlier, so that needs to be cleaned up as well. And then as far as, um, restrictions, um, I believe that the existing occupancy restrictions that cities and counties already have in place through their own licensing programs, if they have a licensing program, um, they should be able to operate, operate, uh, under their current, um, licensing without additional occupancy limits. So, that's where I'm at. Um, but I would like to hear the rest of the discussion as well. Um, so going back down to Yahuts, and I, and I guess if there, if there's additional, um, things that maybe were on an earlier draft, or what have you, that you wanted to bring up under restrictions, now, now would be the time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, let me ask each of our, uh, councillors to please keep your answers very short. We've got, uh, reminder, we've got six other city councils on the line here today, and we'd all like to go home for dinner at some point. Councilor Glenn, your thoughts on the restrictions?
Uh, I, I would lift the six person and go with a, uh, license. Other than that, I'm in favor of everything else on that, on restrictions.
Thank you, Councilor Glenn. Councilor Tooke?
Yeah, I'm, I'm having a little problem with the six-person things, uh, only because I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the State of Oregon, their initial restriction on small gatherings was, uh, no more than ten. Uh, and if that was the case, then I would, uh, be able to live with, uh, a restriction of ten or less. But, uh, that's my input.
Uh, just a clarifika, correction on that. It was ten, but moving into phase one, which the county has now approved for, I believe the, uh, limit is now twenty-five.
That's correct.
That's correct.
So, thank you, Councilor. Does that change your answer?
No, I mean, uh, I think we're getting a little confused on the definition. I think twenty-five was, eh, groups in maybe concert-type situations or bars or something, and ten was for a different kind of thing, but I could be misinterpreting all that, so, uh...
Okay.
I'm not absolutely positive. My understanding was ten was what they were recommending. But if we go into the phase one, it's increased to twenty-five, I have no problem with that.
Thank you, Councilor Tooke. Councilor Valer, your comments on the restrictions?
Um, I guess I prefer the, keeping the six people, um, limit. Um, I also will very quickly comment that when I read it, I took a little issue for, uh, when it said two persons per bed, no more than four per room, because it sounded a little bit like we were checking bedrooms. Once they're really, I think it may be what we mean is, um, in a bedroom that has, um, two beds, we allow four maximum. However they sleep is not our business.
Thank you, Councilor Valer. Councilor O'Shaughnessy?
I concur with all the restrictions. This took me back to college where they actually did random bed checks. I don't know if anyone remembers that, and the women's dorms, they did do random bed checks, but I concur with, uh, six, six people and, uh, everything else.
And, uh, personally, I'm fine with the other, with most of the restrictions. I'm, I'm vacillating a bit, and, uh, on the six person, I, I'm inclined to go ahead and, and agree with, uh, some of my other councillors in bringing that up to, uh, whatever number their license requires. My only hesitation about that is, and I'm wondering how in the world you maintain adequate social distancing, uh, in a single-family residence with twelve or fourteen people, but, um, I would be okay, uh, with, uh, bringing it up to whatever is required on the license. Back to you, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I don't think we have anyone from Walport on the phone, although Mayor Sawyer, I think you have a note about what Walport did.
Oh.
Yes?
Yeah, May, May twenty-third.
So, Walport, um, will be opening lodging on May twenty-third?
They voted to open May twenty-third.
Okay, they voted to open on May twenty-third. Uh, moving on to, um, Suletts, I think it's just, um, you, Mayor Warman, but, um, thoughts on restrictions?
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm happy with how it's written, with the exception of, I don't think there's any reason to, uh, sell a hotel or VRB house, how many people it should have, that's already in their, in their licensing, so I think that should be referred back to their licensing.
Okay. Moving on to Toledo. Mayor Cross?
So, my comment on this is, um, I think that the VRDs, STRs should go with whatever their licensure permits, and I'll point out a couple of things. One, my family could not travel to any of these because we're more than six persons already, and number two, I think you would be inviting violation if you lower the, um, occupancy level from what they are licensed to be. Um, I also think that the language does need to be cleaned up. So, with that, Councilor Dolby?
Uh, I agree, we should remove the, uh, six-person limitation on VRDs and go with the license agreement.
Councilor Dukic?
I concur with Bill, um, the licensing agreement for the VRDs, and we need to clean up the language about the two persons per bed. Who's to tell mom and dad their three-year-old can't sleep with them? So, that's good for me.
Councilor Kamikawa?
Um, I agree, uh, to remove the licensing num, or the number and go with the licensing, um, and, uh, clean it up. Otherwise, I'm good.
Thank you. Katie?
Oh, thank you. Okay, moving on to Newport. Mayor Sawyer?
Okay, I'll just go down the list here. Is, is, uh, Councilor Hall still here? Okay, we'll move on to Councilor Boteo.
I, I, I agree with all the measures except, uh, the six person. I think it needs to be removed.
Okay, Councilor Goble?
Yeah, um, I agree, uh, clean up, uh, the conformity, and then, um, licensing, I think the cities have issued certain license requirements, and, uh, I think it'd be a policing nightmare to put down to six for our people. So, I, I would, uh, go with it.
Councilor Parker?
Yeah, I agree, uh, with the other councillors. I think we should remove the six-person limit and tie it to the existing licensing, uh, occupancy limit, and I don't agree with the two persons per bed. I think that should be stricken to keep it clear and concise and not overly, uh, intrusive as to who's in what bed.
Okay, Councilor Jacoby?
I agree with what Councilor Ryan just said. Um, I do have a question about what exactly the stayover guest room service means. I think we should make that more clear. What does that mean?
That's room service.
Oh, room service.
Okay. Just room service.
Which we need to clean up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and my view is, um, to remove the six and, um, have the current occupancy allowed per license.
All right, um, moving on to Depot Bay. Mayor Gambino, if your phone is still juiced up?
Oh, yes. I put a new battery in during our five-minute break. Thank you very much, Katie.
Excellent, okay.
Um, I have a couple of things. Um, I agree with, uh, so far pretty much everybody else that, uh, we need to remove the six-person limitation, uh, no matter what the license requires. I think it should be based on what the license requires, and simply because most of the emails we've received, uh, said the same thing. And to me, it's common sense that, uh, a hotel or motel would have a much more difficult time, uh, in restricting, uh, cohabitation and lobbies and such, whereas larger homes, uh, that are capable of holding ten or twelve people, depending on their license, uh, should be able to do that. I think it would be a much lower risk. Um, and, uh, I think that's it for me. So, uh, Councilor Callender?
Okay, unmuted. Uh, I agree with the recommendation, except for the, uh, six-person limitation. Whatever in their license, I believe that makes sense. That's what we heard in the labors, the hundreds of them that were there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Goddard?
It's my feeling that in light of the fact that the casino is scheduled to open on the twenty-third, we should consider allowing, uh, lodging to open also on the twenty-third, take advantage of the big weekend, and I also support the, uh, VRDs being able to operate at their licensed capacity. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And, uh, Councilor King?
Yes, um, I oppose the six-person limit and think that, um, everyone should refer, refer to their licensing agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Grant?
Yeah, just, uh, a bit congruent with the, uh, occupancy, uh, license of the, uh, the operators, and, uh, and of cour, and then back into the hotels, remove the person is two years age or older. Um, yeah, eliminate that. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. And, uh, Katie, back to you.
Thank you. All right, up to Mayor Anderson.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Um, so, let's go with, uh, Councilor Parsons.
Right, uh, I agree also with just allowing what the license allows, and the six is kind of arbitrary, and also under hotels with the gyms, I think if we're allowed to open gyms under phase one, then the hotels should be able to open their gyms with the same restrictions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor, uh, Kuz?
I agree with what Mitch said, just to keep it simple, short.
Okay. Councilor Holblin?
Thank you. I am, um, you know, I'm for removing the limit. I feel like bed and breakfast, it says that it's, uh, no communal meals, but I don't feel like that's any different from the hot lunches and things like that that are served at the grocery stores, so I'd be in favor of removing that, as they also have standards of which they operate. Um, I'm agreeing with the gyms and recreation areas to be open, uh, in those areas. I'm looking at opening the hot tubs for the VRDs, home shares, and bed and breakfast, and I don't understand, I don't know if we're there yet, but what laminating paper products are, uh, clean and replace. Uh, I think that is kind of a, an interesting, I don't know, I don't know what's supposed to be laminated, and employees, it says employees, but it doesn't say owners, so I'm wondering if we have to state employees or owners, uh, differentiating those two things.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Hinton?
Hi, um, I would just like to say, I, I'm okay with, um, going with the license for occupa, occupancy, and I still have an issue with, um, the second bullet under hotels, guests encouraged to wear face coverings in public places, and I still would encourage us, um, as a county to, um, have stronger language and mandate, um, face covering, um, when people are out, and that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Casper?
Um, yes, I agree with the language regarding the licensed occupancy for short-term rentals and the bedhead cleanup, and, um, the last thing that Councilor Hinton just said.
Okay. Counselor Mark?
Uh, thanks. Yeah, I, I liked the six-person limit for the reasons that, uh, Commissioner Hunt outlined, but, uh, you know, and you're interested of consensus, it's not something I feel strongly about, so I'd, I'd go along with... So I'd go along with following the license. I want to say, the two persons per bed, I don't think anyone's suggesting that people are going to knock on doors in the middle of the night. I think the idea is that if you have X number of beds in the house, this is, you know, how you count the number of people that are allowed. When it comes to bedtime, no one really cares who's sleeping with them. And likewise, the person that's two years of age or older, that means if you have an infant, that doesn't count your limit. So that's the point of that, that language. I don't think I had any other issues. Are we at some point getting to this business of requiring a period between use of the rooms? I don't know how we're going to get to that.
Yes, this is Commissioner Jacobson. I actually thought people would bring it up in this discussion on restrictions, but they did not. So we'll, I guess we'll get to that, yes.
I would... Let me add mine. I'd be going with the per, the license for the facility, so. Commissioner, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you. And I would just respond to Riley's comment about lamination. I think in VRDs often, you know, might have instructions for how you contact the owner or that sort of thing. So any instructions to people, because a lot of the check-in is remote, or tsunami evacuation routes or whatever that are posted would be laminated, so they're just easier to clean. I think that's where that came from. Okay, I'm looking at Wayne.
Well, a couple of suggestions, just in terms...
Sheriff Jacobson and Wayne, this is Doug.
Yes.
Just to provide clarification on a couple of items that were discussed. There's an email that was sent by the general manager of the West Web, and he indicated that referencing the confusion on room service, that breakfast, grab-and-go, sealed items, room service, he says this is for delivery to a room, room door, and the no-stayover guest room service is referring to cleaning a room while a guest is on the room.
Ah.
Okay.
Provide clarification on those two bullet points.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sheriff Jacobson, this is Rebecca Austin.
Yes.
And I do have a little clarification possibly for, that will help with the cleaning business. So Amy Chapman sent me, she's our environmental health manager, she sent me this email, that we do have data about the length of time for COVID-positive people occupying a room. So that's the only data we will have, and of course, we wouldn't know if somebody was COVID-positive unless they were, you know, we were involved somehow with that alternative housing. But anyhow, they say wait 24 hours for a COVID-positive guest, and then clean and disinfect surfaces according to the rules, and then/or wait seven days and clean as usual without the disinfecting surfaces. And then as far as survival on surfaces, there's new research that shows that COVID-19 is detectable in the air for up to three hours, and it can also survive up to four hours on copper, up to 24 hours on cardboard, and up to two to three days on plastic and stainless steel. So, but there's no evidence that shows that people can acquire COVID-19 from touching those surfaces.
Thank you, Rebecca. That, I think that's really helpful to the discussion we need to have. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay, I'm looking at Wayne.
Actually, just listening to the comments that came through and seeing some things here, that the first one is on the restrictions. And again, for both hotels, motels, and the six-person, that was intended to be a limitation on the number of people in a room or in a house. You know, and again, as I think explained by Commissioner Hunt, that was intended to limit the number of people that come in for this initial period of time, so you didn't have as many. So each time it turns over, there's a limited number of people coming in. But it sounds like those restrictions, everybody wants to go, or the majority want to go with the existing occupancy limits that are already covered in code by all the entities. So one of the things you could do real easily is just strike that out, if that's what you want to do. But if you're doing that, I would suggest you strike out the same thing on hotels, motels, if you're following the same logic. You would strike out the no more than four persons, excuse me, more, on hotels, motels, and then strike out the six-person, if that's what seems to be the direction you want to go. That's how you could resolve that. I would put back in no-stayover guest room service, but put in parentheses behind it, room cleaning. So that's more, that's clearly what they're saying, is you stay three days in a room, and they come in and clean. Normally, they come in and clean, you know, every night, or remake the bed. And what we're saying is no room service in there, that guest room clean service in between times. That's what that means. That's the clarification. I appreciate that. And if I took out the restrictions, you'd take out the idea of the two-year-old. And that, again, is a determination of the maximum occupancy. You don't count a child two years or younger in that determination of maximum occupancy. That's what that was intended. It was a very shorthand way of doing that. We have much more language in our codes that deal with that, but that was what was intended. But what I'm hearing is that, at least it sounds like, the majority of folks want to strike both the limitations in hotels, motels, and in SDRs, VRDs, and just limit the occupancy to whatever is allowed under law. Do you hear that?
That's kind of what I'm hearing.
Okay.
So I guess from a process perspective, should we keep picking away, Wayne? Do you want to take a vote on what we have?
Well, I think the other thing that, again, that seemed to come back around was this idea of any kind of time in between. And I do want to note what Rebecca Austin talked about in terms of the guidelines for cleaning a room if there's a COVID-positive person in there. That's actually in this right now, and it's included. And in fact, Amy and I talked about those particular restrictions. So that's spelled out in the OHA guidelines, specifically how you clean a room when someone has COVID in it. And we actually include that in here. So I think the only thing that I was hearing that really wasn't addressed was this question of 24, 48 hours, whatever.
So let's go back and chat through this hold. And I know we've been on the phone for a while, but we are getting there, people, so hang on. All right, so coming back to the discussion of a hold, turning it back to the BOC for discussion on this, I would say just how I'm feeling is that as long as the, oh, no, okay. As long as the owner or manager of the hotel or vacation rental has enough adequate time to do the cleaning that we're guiding, both if there's no COVID-suspected person, or if there is, as long as they have adequate time to meet those housekeeping requirements. And I don't feel we need an extra hold for there, as long as they have adequate time. And I would actually add some language under housekeeping requirements or in restrictions, that they have adequate time to do that cleaning before rebooking. Commissioner Hall? Comments about holds?
I'm not sure that, you know, requiring 24-hour, 48-hour vacancy period is going to significantly impact worker or guest safety, and so I'm inclined not to want to impose that.
Okay, Commissioner Hunt?
I guess I'll go back to Rebecca Austin. I got confused, and I'm getting old. Or actually, my wife would say I am old. What, clarify what the state or the governor's expectations are on if there's a COVID-infected person in an area. Maybe I missed something. Or Wayne?
I think what Rebecca was reflecting, and this is a discussion I had with Amy Chapman about this, is that if we have a COVID-positive case, or actually, there's even a presumptive case, then that rooms have to be cleaned in accordance with Oregon Health Authority guidelines. And those do require a 24-hour, you either leave the room vacant for 24 hours before you go in and clean, or it can sit vacant for seven days, in which case then you can reuse the room. But those are all guidelines that are spelled out by Oregon Health Authority, and they're actually referenced specifically in saying you have to adhere to those guidelines if you end up with one of those cases in one of your lodging properties. So we've already included that language in the recommendations here.
Okay, in which case I'm comfortable with that, with the present restrictions, recognizing that there's reference to the Oregon Health Authority.
Okay. All right, thanks. Yeah, let's kind of discuss this a little bit, but is there any, you want to bring it back up, Mr. Mayor?
Why don't you come back to us if you wouldn't mind?
Okay, great. No worries. Okay, on to Suletts, Mayor Werman, anything you'd like to say?
No, I don't have anything to add right now.
Okay, on to Toledo, Mayor Cross.
The only thing I would add is that going from a purely scientific point of view, leaving the rooms vacant for 24 hours increases the likelihood of any leftover virus to be dead by the time the next people check in. So there is that possibility. Any other counsels?
I do have a comment about personal protective gear for the housekeepers. I noticed that the governor's guidance says housekeepers should wear gloves and gowns, and may choose to wear cloth coverings. I'm wondering if housekeepers don't have that equipment available, will it be provided by the business they're working on?
Counselor Dukic?
I'm really on the fence about requiring an extra stay. I think ultimately, I'm for it, to have that extra time before turnover.
Counselor Kamikawa?
Because Toledo has one hotel, and it's actually long-term rental, I'm not going to put my two cents in. I'm going to let everybody who has hotels and VRDs worry about it. Thanks.
Thank you, Betty. Back to you, Commissioner Jacobson.
All right, thanks. Over to Mayor Sawyer.
Okay, Counselor Hall, I think you're gone. Counselor Boteo?
I think, you know, the 24 hours, it's a good time to put, I think I've over the 24 hours.
Okay, Counselor Goble?
Yeah, I think I agree with Wayne. I think it's covered in the Oregon Health Rules, and I don't think we need to be resentful. I think it's already covered. If somebody's found to have COVID, they, there's a process already in place to address that in the rooms.
Counselor Parker?
I'm in favor as so described.
Counselor Jacoby?
Yes, the CDC guidelines say with disinfectant, 24 hours is sufficient. With just plain cleaning, they say a week. Those are the guidelines. Thank you.
And I also concur with the 24 hours in the OHA.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Depot Bay, Mayor Gambino?
Yes, Robert here. I don't, I'm of the opinion, I don't believe that we need to worry about time constraints on when they can turn around hotels, motels, and VRDs, because I genuinely believe that most of these purveyors are going to consider liabilities. If they, you know, come up with a COVID case because they didn't clean quite properly, well, then there's some liability there. I think self-policing is good enough. And that's my two cents, Counselor Callender.
Yes, I tend to agree with that, that this is their profession. They want to make sure this is a viable business for a long time in the future. They want to avoid lawsuits from both their employees and their guests. I, the more leeway the owners can make as far as the decision, I'd like to turn it to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Goddard?
I would support the idea that the state has timeframes in place already. The only observation that I would make as far as a 24-hour restriction is that the chance of having any airborne virus would be minimized after 24 hours, and that is when it would seem to be most infectious, since it's viable in the air for a number of hours.
Good point. Thank you. Counselor King?
If I would oppose the 24-hour hold, I think that most of these places, hopefully all of them, will be very, very careful, especially with everything that we've been through lately. I think that they'd probably over-clean more so than not-clean enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Grant?
Yeah, I would be for staying with the state's recommended guidelines, not go any stricter. So if that means no 24 hours, then that's what I would support. If it means 24 hours according to the state's recommended guidelines, then I would be for that. So what does the state recommend? Again, Chair, could you reiterate that, please?
Yeah, the state recommends if you have a COVID-positive or COVID-suspected case, maybe someone was sick and you're waiting for a test result or something like that, that you follow CDC requirements for cleaning and wait 24 hours, or you wait seven days with less kind of stringent cleaning requirements.
Well, then I'd go for the 24 hours.
Okay.
Yes, I'd go with the CDC guidelines.
Wayne's going to clarify something.
I just want to clarify, that's already in place in terms of a COVID-positive. What we were discussing is a mandatory across-the-board 24-hour wait between.
No.
And that's not required, that's not required in anything that I'm aware of in the regulations. So...
Thank you. Who's this?
Wayne Dillon.
Who? I'm sorry.
Sorry, though.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Okay, so, yeah, so then, good. Let's not go any stricter then. So let's just go with the current guidelines and not require 24 hours between occupancy.
Thank you. And Katie, back to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Up to Lincoln City with Mayor Anderson.
All right, thank you very much. Counselor Mark?
Oh, sorry, playing with my switch here. Am I on?
We hear you.
Can you hear me? Okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't, I couldn't...
Yep.
Um, I worked front desk at a hotel for a year in Lincoln City. There was great pressure every day for the housekeepers to, you know, if you had checkout time at 11:00 and check-in time at 4:00, it was really, really difficult for the housekeepers to get all those rooms ready in time. And this notion that, oh, the hotels are going to do what's right, they're under great pressure, especially with the money they've lost, to keep those rooms filled and active. And...
Rod Cross, Mayor of Toledo?
Another point is, another point is that the testing has been so inadequate that who knows if someone is COVID-positive or not. We are going to have people coming to these hotels asymptomatic and carrying the virus. I think we're, I'm really concerned that we are not giving enough time in between room stays to guarantee, there is no guarantee, but to improve the likelihood that the virus is not spreading. I think this is a big issue. And I'd like to, I think we need to go back and really, really look at the strong, I think 24 hours between room stays is a minimal, minimal protection.
All right. Counselor Casper?
Yes, I agree. I favor 24. I favor 24 hours between room stays.
Okay. Counselor Hinton?
Hi, um, I originally said four to five days because the virus does last, um, quite a number of hours and days on plastics and hard surfaces. And although we want the businesses to prosper, I'm very concerned about our population who are the housekeepers for all the different, um, short-term rentals we have. And so I want to protect them as we move forward with opening this, um, industry. And so I realize that four to five days is a long time, so I will revise mine to three days before the housekeeper goes in. I, I don't want to sacrifice our, our citizens for, um, being able to move the rooms faster.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Hoagland?
Hello, I am also in favor of having, um, a time in between, um, the stays, um, between rentals, if that's the minimum of 24 hours. I, I support that, but I think, you know, it's a, it's a balance that we all are struggling with, but a minimum of 24 hours.
All right. Counselor Kuz?
Um, I'd like to see the 24-hour hold before the house cleaner goes in, um, simply because I have a daughter who works that, and she gets very scared. So we don't want to make an assumption that we know if somebody's a carrier or not. So I'm in favor for a 24-hour hold and clean.
All right. Counselor Parsons?
Um, yeah, I'm not an expert or a health official, and the health official doesn't sound like there's a need for it, so I do not believe there's a need for it either.
All right, so as, as written, okay? Um, and actually, I, if others could mute?
Oh, Mayor Anderson, you're breaking out a little bit.
I think, uh, somebody else needs to mute their phone. All right.
There we go.
Anyway, I, I, yeah, I'm all for what is written. Um, I'm in agreement with Counselor Parsons. I'm amazed that, uh, all through this epidemic, uh, we talk about the science, follow the science. And, uh, you know, so far, I, I haven't heard any doctors on the, you know, of elected officials here. Uh, so I'm following the science, and the recommendation is, uh, you know, go ahead as, as this agreement is written. Nobody's come out saying, you know, a gap between occupancy. Back to you, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, I think what I'm seeing here, uh, from all the discussions we've had today, um, we have already, uh, all of us have already adopted service changes and signage, um, and then we just had discussion on restrictions for hotels and motels, as well as potential hold between rooms. Um, we started a discussion on housekeeping, which kind of got into holds, although the County Board of Commissioners did pass that. Um, we still did not discuss RV parks and campgrounds, though. No one really brought that up anywhere, so I'm assuming we're gonna be okay in an agreement on that. So I know Wayne has been kind of typing away.
I have.
Over there. I'm hoping you can give us kind of a summary of, um, perhaps those potential modifications we all saw. What I'm seeing is that perhaps we do have, um, an agreement on a, or mostly an agreement on a June 1st, um, opening for both, um, hotels and VRDs, uh, with some modified restrictions, modified from the draft we came here today. Um, the 24-hour hold does seem to vary by jurisdiction, so that very well ends up may being different as we go through. So perhaps you could read those changes, and then I would suggest we go juris, but jurisdiction by jurisdiction and vote on opening date, modified restrictions, um, cleaning, if you haven't already done that, um, that minimum requirements for housekeeping, as well as RV parks and campgrounds, um, and then that 24-hour hold might be something, uh, that might be different in each place as well.
No names are available.
Take it away, Wayne.
Let me do that, but let me also note the fact that we, we did identify some changes for Phase 2 and Phase 3 in this, but knowing that the state has not really finalized their guidance on Phase 2 and Phase 3, if we need to revisit that. But basically, what we would do is, um, in Phase 2, just to explain that, we would lift all the restrictions, basically, except for those that were on groups. So any of the nights and occupancy limits would be lifted. Um, and, um, we might open with pools and all the other things that were closed and that, but we'll come back and have to revisit that at some point when we get further guidance from the state on Phase 2. Same thing with Phase 3. So I'm gonna start with, uh, in the actual order itself, I added a footnote that reflected the fact that today, the Board of Commissioners, uh, made a motion and accepted, um, the approval from the governor to enter into Phase 1 effective March, or excuse me, May 15th. So that's so noted in the order itself. Um, I added in language under, uh, service changes that now say that RV parks will do remote check-in or use an alternative, uh, method described above. I added the word pools under signage for hotels, motels, so it's not just spas, but pools, spas, gyms, lounges, or seating areas. Turning to the next page, um, I explained, and I want to get the language I used here. Uh, I left in no stay over guest room service, but I put in notations behind there in parentheses, that's daily room cleaning for multiple-day stays. That means there will not be allowed. Okay? Um, I took out the restrictions on two persons per bed and no more than four people, and the reference to, uh, person is two, uh, two years of age. I put, um, I amended the language on pools, spas, gyms, and other recreational amenities stay closed, but I did add the language that says unless otherwise authorized by the state, since they may be doing something in Phase 1 to authorize that. Um, this is the one that, that I think is the optional one that people will have to vote on. I put a minimum 24-hour hold be maintained between checkout and the time the room is cleaned, uh, and put out for rental again. And the same kind of language under STRs and VRDs, except instead of room, it would say I took out the, and STRs and VRDs just below that, I took out all reference to two persons per bed and the limits on occupancy, all the way down through, uh, person is two years of age or older. And that, I think, is the last change I made.
Okay, thank you. Um, so those are the changes we made to restrictions, and then, uh, the guidance for, um, RV parks, which we, we didn't get into, um, and then housekeeping would remain, um, as is.
As is.
Um, I just got a note that, um, I think the City of Newport is losing one of their council members here very soon, um, so I would go ahead and ask if they would like to vote first on this, and turn it over to Mayor Sawyer.
Okay, thank you. Um, do I have a motion for, from the council to do the, the occupancy restrictions and cleaning guidelines as outlined by, uh, Wayne Belmont?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Jacoby.
Okay. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
I would say one additional thing we need to vote on is the actual opening date. We did a straw man, but did not actually vote on that.
What I suggest is, I think that as you're getting these, the votes in here, what you do is go back and adopt the order. You're gonna, and the order has the date in it, the June 1st date, the Board of Commissioners, and then we just need to mute, and one more quick round to say, do you concur with the order as adopted by the board? So that I can reference that in this order. I think Newport also adopts their own separate order, but that's something you do at a later date.
Okay, so.
Point of, point, excuse me, point of order, uh, Chair?
Yes.
This is Jerome Grant from Depot Bay. So, as I understand it, this, this vote will, uh, bring, in, in our case, Depot Bay in, in line with, uh, the county's, uh, orders and whatnot, guidelines for opening on Phase 1. How, and as with hotels, however, um, in the case of Walport, they've already opted out, and so they're not bound by any, any decision that the, the joint councils meet here today by what we decide. They have decided to open up on the 23rd. Am I right, and is that, is that true?
That's correct.
Okay, so, um, that would mean the City of Depot Bay could vote nay, uh, in the, uh, in the opening, and we could have our own meeting and, and, uh, we would be free to, um, provide our own opening date. Is, so is that true?
There is language in the orders, and it's been there all along, that a city can concur with this and go along with it, but that you reserve the right to revisit this on your own, make your own decisions. What we were trying to do is be as uniform as we can across the county, but it does not, uh, for, it doesn't prohibit a city from making its own decisions.
I appreciate that. Thank you for clarity, Wayne.
Yes.
All right, that's all.
Okay.
Uh, Chair, and this is Doug.
Yes.
Wayne. Um, I, I wasn't sure, I thought that, or somebody brought up the point under VRDs, STRs, employees versus owners. Have we clarified that, or are we just leaving it employees? And is an owner by definition an employee?
Normally, by definition, you would not be an employee. Um, I can add that language pretty simply. I'll put owners slash employees.
That, I think, be more comfortable with it.
That, that's a simple change to make.
Okay, so Wayne, just an order question here. We had the City of Newport vote, they did not have a date, but they did vote on those proposed changes. Are you advising that we have all the other cities vote on those proposed changes and then come back to adopt with a date?
Well, I think it would be nice to have that, because then at least you know where everybody stands, and then I think we can put together a final package, voted by you, concurrence by the cities, and away we go.
Got it, that's what I thought. Okay, um, moving through, I guess we'll head up to Depot Bay.
Yes, Depot Bay, Mayor Gambino. Um, I would recommend going with, uh, said, uh, iterations to the, uh, Lincoln County Exhibit A reopening framework plan. And, um, I would say that I, I believe that we should, uh, remain constant with the county and with the other cities, go with those dates and those changes in restrictions. And at this point, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Counselor King?
Uh-oh. Counselor King moves. And is there a second?
What, uh, I'll, I'll wait for the second, but what are you making a motion for? Everything that you said, or, or just on the, the issue as, on hand?
Um, issues that's on hand.
Which is the, uh, guidelines for hotels, uh, cleaning?
Wayne, do you want to read, do you want to read those again?
I think specifically, we were talking about, um, the changes that we made. Go back to the beginning here, so there, we added in RV parks, their check-in on service changes, um, their check-in procedures. We added the word pools to signage for hotels, motels. In restrictions, we clarified that no stay over guest, uh, services allowed, and that's room cleaning, uh, or daily room cleaning when you have a multi-day stay. We removed all the language around restricting occupancy, the two persons and four rooms per bed and person is two years of age or younger. We, uh, clarified that pools, spas, gyms, and other recreational amenities stay closed unless otherwise authorized by the state. And STRs and VRDs on restrictions, we removed any of the language on occupancy, so everyone would actually, uh, fall back on the occupancy currently allowed under their codes.
And the 24-hour vacancy rule between occupants, is that?
Yeah, it says, yeah, it says a minimum 24 hours, a minimum 24-hour hold be maintained between checkout and the time the room is cleaned and put out for rental again.
Okay, so that's still in, in this, would be this motion for Depot Bay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So Wayne, again, are we gonna clarify employees and owners?
Wayne, did you hear that?
No, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Hunt, uh, wanted you to add the clarification between employees and owners.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, that's right, that's in there too. Thank you, Commissioner Hunt. I've added, every place that it has a reference to employees, it says owners slash employees.
Chair Jacobson, this is Commissioner Hall, could I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, Commissioner Hall.
Okay, Mr. Belmont, again, uh, so we've had Newport approve this, and now, uh, including the 24-hour hold, unknown, Depot Bay is now voting. I, it's my understanding, but I would just like to confirm before we go further, that this 24-hour hold would only apply for, well, the county is in Phase 1, and, along with these other restrictions, that once, once we do move to Phase 2, that would be removed?
That, that is correct.
Okay, okay.
Okay, back to me, thank you. Um, I don't recall if we had a second yet or not. Did we have a second? Nobody wants to second the motion? Okay, the motion dies. Thank you, Katie.
Okay, thanks. Um, yes, I heard my name.
This is Riley Hoagland. I did want to speak to the three-night minimum length of stay for the RV parks and campgrounds, and since that hasn't been talked about.
Okay, I think that, I'm looking at my current grant, and I do not see that in the current draft.
That's not in the current draft.
Okay.
Unless you want to discuss about putting it back in?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, just the, the current language for RV parks and campgrounds is RV parks and campgrounds, all group and public areas closed, um, camping allowed, except for no, uh, group, uh, tent camping in this phase, restrooms cleaned according to state guidance, patrons bring own soap, pants, sand, kaiser, and toilet paper, check-in and check-out contact-free, employees required to wear face coverings at all times when in public areas, when guests are present, present. Guests encouraged to wear face coverings while in town for state organs guidance, um, communicated prior to arrival. Okay, uh, moving up to Lincoln City.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, I would entertain a, uh, motion to approve the changes to the county order 5-20-136 as read by, uh, Mr. Belmont.
So moved.
So moved.
And that's, I heard, uh, Counselor Kuz, is there a second?
Second.
And who's that?
Casper.
Okay, thank you. Um, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motions, say aye.
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 All right. Opposed with a nay?
Nay.
And who's that?
Mitch.
Okay, thank you. Uh, motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, circling down to Toledo. Mayor Cross.
Hi, Katie.
Aye.
Our, it's been pointed out to me that our notice of this meeting to the citizens of Toledo stated that we were not going to take any formal votes.
Okay.
At this time. So, um, I will take any advisory comments from the council, but we will have to take this up for formal action next Wednesday at our next council meeting. So, any counselor comment? Hearing none? I'll kick it back to you, Katie.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to Yahudz.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I would entertain a motion to approve the restrictions and housekeeping standards for VRDs and hotels as outlined by Wayne Belmont. Do I hear such a motion? Aye, so moved. Thank you, Counselor Glenn. Those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, by nay?
Nay.
Uh, Counselor Valer in the negative, motion carries. Back to you, Commissioner.
Hey, thank you. Okay, now, moving on to the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Um, I just want to clarify something, Wayne, so that 24-hour hold between people coming in and out would be a Phase 1, so essentially, if all goes well, we're essentially talking about a very limited time that would be in effect because, um, we would be in- that would be in effect, because we would be entering Phase Two, if I got that correct shortly thereafter, watching would open. Okay. All right, do I have a motion to adopt housekeeping rules, RV park guidance, as well as restrictions as presented by Council Belmont?
This is Commissioner Hall, and I would so move.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hunt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nay? Nope. All right, motion carries. All right, we did go through all the cities. We had a motion die. We had a couple of passes in Newport, Lincoln City, in the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, and Yahauts. We had Toledo that was not able to take a vote, Walport, who's not on the phone, and Sletz, who did not have a quorum, so that's kind of where we're at. Council Belmont, as far as next steps here goes?
Here we go. I, I'm going to have to make some changes in the order itself, because the draft order had concurrence by a number of cities. I will take out Walport and Toledo if they, and just footnote that Walport has a different date, and add that Toledo will be voting on its, on these provisions at a later date.
And Depot Bay, because their motion died.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. So I got to get all those. Let me make a notation real quickly here. And other than that, everything else would be as described with one slight change, just to make it clear, what we were saying, is I added into the Phase Two language on the very last page of the draft that the cleaning practices remain, except the 24-hour minimum between cleaning, which we lifted at Phase Two. So if you're ready, we could actually, and the order already, the proposed order already contains the operative date of June 1, 2020. And we could take a motion on the order as amended at this meeting, the additional language that I've described here, and then we can go back through with one last quick-
One last time.
To see if we get concurrence from the cities.
Okay. All right, I guess I'll start with the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. This is a similar-
So-
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was just going to ask, so essentially, what are we, what's the proposed motion that we vote to approve the order with all of the proposed changes incorporated?
At a June 1 start.
Okay.
And a June 1 start.
With a, with a June 1 start date, yes. I'm, I'm happy to move for that.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, no nays. All right, motion passes. All right, let's see, let's go down to Yahauts.
I would entertain a motion to approve the order as amended. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
I so moved.
It's been moved by Counselor Oceanis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, or any of those by-
Nay.
Motion carries, 4 to 1.
Okay, thank you. Toledo not able to vote, so I'll move on them to Newport, excuse me. Mayor Sawyer?
Okay, I, the, the motion would be to approve the county order 520136 as amended, modifying order 420118, exercising authority to act to protect the Lincoln County citizens and minimize effects of the COVID-19 emergency, and further direct the city manager to execute an emergency order for the city of Newport incorporating the provisions as provided in the county order. Do I, do I hear a motion?
I have a question, Dean.
Yes.
So that order has June 1st minute, so there's been a lot of discussion about, I mean, another date, and I think people pay, just ask about that too, that if they wanted to have a different date, they didn't approve the order. I think if we vote no on this, then we can, as a city council, we could look at that and see if we wanted to change to a different date.
Deep Mar, this is Spencer. So if the motion is made, or if the motion is not approved, then obviously we don't concur with the county order. It could be taken up at, at our next meeting. If the motion is approved by a majority of the council, if a motion is made and supported and approved, then the issue would be addressed today.
Yeah, I think, I think there was a couple of counselors in there that kind of indicated that they might want to have a different date in June 1 and get our people back to work. So I'm just, I just wanted to clarify that, that if you move on, if you move yes on this motion, the date that we accept is June 1.
That's correct.
Okay.
You want to make the motion?
Excuse me, I also have a question. This is Cynthia. Please forgive me, I just need clarification. How do we stand on the vote for the room cleaning and the 24-hour hold? I'm, I have lost track on that. Please clarify.
The 24-hour hold is in place through Phase One. It goes away on Phase Two of the governor's declaration, so it's in the order as it stands.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do I have a, a motion? I, I read the motion.
For the, for- I'll go, I'll go ahead and move to concur with the, the county commission's order as proposed with a reopen date for hotels, hotels and VRDs of June 1, although if I had the votes, I would prefer to do it for May 23rd.
Well, then why don't we make that motion for May 23rd then?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll move for an opening date of May 23rd rather than June 1, with the other restrictions as discussed in place.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion was made by Counselor Goble, second, or by Counselor Parker, second by Counselor Goble. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Do we still have a quorum on the phone?
Cynthia, did you vote? Cynthia?
Excuse me, I vote yes. Excuse me, I was dealing with my puppy. Sorry. Yes, is my vote.
Okay, so the motion does carry.
And that's what they, May 23rd date?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, moving back into Depot Bay.
Yes, Mayor Gambino. Two points of order here. I don't believe, I must not understand, I don't see how you can have a motion of something different on a motion that was already on the table. And then, secondly, I must apologize, I don't believe we can vote on this, because we did not get a second on the motion, and I am embarrassed by that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Depot Bay, I think is, is going to be, is separate at this point. You know, Newport can decide where they want to go with this. That's their prerogative to do that.
Uh, Mayor Gambino, Mayor Gambino, this is Debbie Kalender.
Yes.
Okay, the reason I didn't second the motion was because I, I believe we've had new information presented since the start of the meeting. At the start of the meeting, I didn't know the tribes were opening the casino and all the hotels that they own up there, nor did I know that Walport was going for a different date. My preference would have been for us to open for Memorial Day.
That's fine. You have that right. That's, that's not a problem. The fact remains, we did not get a second. Chair Jacobson, I believe I'm correct that we cannot vote?
You can make a motion. I, I'm not their attorney, so I can, I can advise them as to what they can do. But if you want to make a motion and see if you get another second on the, on this revised, on the entire package, you can try that, but it sounds like you don't have consensus.
Negative. I, I don't think so, negative, no. Chair Jacobson?
Yeah, that's fine, Mayor Jerome Grant. I, I would, we have a, a regular meeting this coming Tuesday that we can discuss this, if I need to make a motion.
Always put it off. Always put it off. Fine. We're not going to have-
I'll make a motion now that we have, that we discuss this, or, or, you know, on our meeting on Tuesday. But I don't think that's what, that, I don't think what, that's what this process is for, so.
This process is for the cities of Lincoln County and Lincoln County proper to vote on the motion that was presented. If you don't, if you don't second it, you can't vote on it. Therefore, it's dead.
Make another motion.
I guess let's, let's go up to Lincoln City.
All right, let's entertain a motion to approve and concur with the county order 5-20-136 as amended.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion. This is Mitch.
Thank, thank you, Mitch. Is there a second?
Click and, Riley.
All right, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed with a nay?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
This is for the June 1st or the 8?
Oh, this is June 1st.
June 1st.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so were those all, were, were there any nays? All right, thank you. So that passed 7-0. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Just to, it's been a long meeting. Thank you, everybody, for hanging in there. Just to kind of summarize where we're at before we adjourn here for people following along.
Madam Chair, just before you do that, Sletz, I think the mayor's still on.
Oh, yeah, Mayor Warman, I, I think you're by yourself, but comments?
No, I mean, June 1st is what we've talked about since the beginning, and that's what we are going to vote on, Sletz.
Okay, and then did we have anybody from Walport join us? Okay. So just to kind of clarify what just happened, so with the changes that Council Belmont read, the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, which has jurisdiction over the unincorporated parts, that did pass, Newport with a June 1 open date, Newport passed that package with a May 23rd open date, Yahauts passed it with a June 1 open date, Walport, I don't know if they voted on the restrictions we had in place or not, but they are opening on May, May 23rd. Depot Bay was not able to get a second, but it sounds like they may have further discussion at their meeting later this week, I believe on Tuesday is what Jerome said. And then Lincoln City passed with a June 1 date, and Toledo would need to go back into a different meeting where they can take a vote, and Sletz would need to go back when they have a quorum. So that's kind of the summary of what happened. We will try to have our Public Information Officer, Casey, work on kind of a write-up to go out to the public tomorrow that explains the different votes that just take, took place, and someone from the city. No? Okay. And, and additionally, Wayne will provide that final order to get out as well.
And the final order will reflect, because the proposal had concurrences, and obviously there's different decisions that were made, and it will reflect the decisions made by each of the individual entities.
Yes. I would also say that to Walport, Toledo, Depot Bay, and Sletz that need to go back and possibly have additional discussion, you know, schedules are, of course, challenging right now, but if you wanted to have someone from the county be there to just explain, you know, what happened or whatever, just for consistency, let us know. We'll try to have someone attend remotely on your upcoming meetings. I look to Wayne and to Spencer, see if there's any additional information. Wayne?